Ready? I have called the meeting of the Board of Education to order. First, I'd like to welcome everybody. Thank you for coming. And I just want to tell you that this board will continue its pledge to fulfill its levy obligations, that we made promises at the levy. We're going to fulfill those obligations. We're going to allocate our resources to do that. And also, we have pledged to make Canfield a top-10 academic school in the state of Ohio, and we plan to honor that pledge also. But we also plan to be very frugal and prudent with the blessings that you've given us in tax dollars. And with that, could you please call the board?
Mr. Frye, President.
President.
Mr. Bovin, Vice President.
Here.
Mrs. Lasich, here. Mr. Olson.
Here.
Mr. Tanser.
Please stand and pledge your flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. It gives us the principals' report. Who's the leadoff?
I'll go first.
Who's going to get the hit, so we can bunch you over?
I will start. I'm Joe Maroney. I'm the principal of Hilltop Elementary School. A couple of quick updates. Travis and I are going to kind of tag team, so you don't get all the same information from us. I want to start by recognizing our custodians. I know that we're going to be hiring a new head custodian. That's on the agenda tonight. Our head custodian and our assistant custodian, Tommy Timlin, spent a lot of time over Christmas break painting and doing a lot of things to Hilltop that need been done. I just want to give them credit publicly. And I also want to thank Mr. Ware and Mr. Hammond. Mr. Hammond's in charge of our buildings and grounds. On January 7th, when it was 10 degrees below zero, we had four of our eight heating units that are on the roof of Hilltop out, and they spent about three hours on the roof in sub-zero temperature in 10, 15-minute increments trying to get those back up and running. I feel that went well beyond the call of duty, and I wanted to publicly thank them for their efforts. Curriculum and data, our teachers are continuing to work with Carol Young, our literacy coach, on a weekly basis on guided reading and doing all kinds of things related to reading. And she's been a great help in both buildings. Our fourth graders took the OSAT test. The OSAT will give you a general ability score, an IQ score, in other words, on your students. Our fourth graders took those in January. Those scores have been given back and distributed to our teachers. They're going through that data analyzing where our students' strengths and weaknesses are, and they are going to be sharing that information with parents at our conferences in February. Conferences will take place on Monday, Thursday, February 6th, and Monday, February 10th. Conference hours at both schools are 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Our teachers got some training in drun. That was today. Drun was at both buildings, training our teachers. Some upcoming events at Hilltop tomorrow night from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock at Mr. Anthony's and Borman is our Dinner with Dad. We'd like to invite all of the board members to come. Mr. Jordan, I believe, will be there for Dinner with Dad. Friday, January 24th, report cards will be sent home to parents. January 30th and January 31st are two PTO general meetings. On Thursday, January 30th, that will be at 7:00 in the Hilltop Library. And on the 31st, that will be Friday morning at 9:00 a.m., and that will be in the Hilltop cafeteria. As I previously mentioned, conferences will be Thursday, February 6th, and Monday, February 10th. And February 13th is the 100th Day of School, which we will celebrate at Hilltop and at CH. Thank you.
Governor of CH Campbell, first of all, I would just like to take a minute to welcome all of our new board members here today. It's very nice, and thank you for taking the time to serve. It's a big commitment, and we welcome you all. Mr. Hammond was also busy in our building as well. Mr. Hammond installed some new doors in our gymnasium, which were a security concern in the past. So having those in there, they worked hard. The new doors work beautifully. They're self-clothing, self-latching, so we should not have any issues with those from this point forward. So we're very grateful for that. Also, in addition to that, we have a few events that are going to be coming up that board members are welcome to attend. And I would just say that the CH Campbell website is a great place if you ever want to go on and look for any events or anything else. You can check all of those on there, and board members are welcome at any of those. One of the big events that we're going to be having is our Dinner with Dad, same as Hilltop. And we have Magic Mike, a local magician, coming in to entertain the kids, as well as DJ Anthony Genoni. And they're going to have prize baskets to raffle off. It's really a special time that all of our students get to spend with their fathers. So that's coming up next week on Monday. In addition to that, we are also going to be having a STEM Week at CH Campbell. Hilltop had theirs earlier in the year. Ours will be in May. And if any board members would like to get involved with that, they are really looking for volunteers. It could be a one-day commitment, a half-day commitment. It could even be a full-week commitment if you wanted to get involved. So if anybody gets interested in doing some hands-on STEM activities with our students, by all means, come in, give me a phone call. We can sign you up and put you down for some times for that. We also had Beach Day at CH Campbell last Friday. And Beach Day is a fun time for all of our kids. They dress up in their best spring attire. They have a picnic-style lunch with towels in the gymnasium or in the cafeteria, and then they go to the gym for some beach-themed games after that. So they use that to get out of the winter doldrums that they've been stuck in for a while now. In addition to that, we also had our staff trained in drun today. And we will be having our report cards going out this Friday, along with everybody else. Also, CH Campbell and Hilltop have the Smile Station come to visit. And the Smile Station is a mobile dental clinic that provides dental services to all children regardless of their ability to pay. It's a great service that is offered by St. Elizabeth Health Centers, and we need to really thank Regina Reynolds, the nurse in the middle school and high school, for setting all of that up for us. So we are very grateful to her. And then finally, our teachers have been starting to create professional growth plans for themselves, and we're starting to review those as well to see what their goals are and how they're going to reach those by the end of the year. So thank you very much today.
Thank you.
The middle school has also trained their, our staff, in drun. So at this point, all of our teachers are quite capable of getting around drun, and we plan to roll that out within the next month. Our teachers were also trained in Google Apps, and the reason for that is that many of the apps are free. Teachers that implement them can incorporate problem-based instruction in the classroom, reduce paper, and provide endless resources for instruction, practice, and assessment. We also have two ladies from the Mahoning County ESC coming out, Jennifer Walker and Kristen Fox. They're going to train our staff at our next whole staff meeting in Prose Writing, because Prose Writing will be a huge component of the new park assessments next year. And CBMS teachers will also receive training on the new IIS, and there's information in your packet on the IIS. Also, our custodians did a spectacular job over break. We have two beautiful Cardinals in our lobby, and that, if you remember, the green in the lobby, that's gone too. So it looks very, very nice and fresh in there. So thanks to them. Teachers will have January data in by the end of the month. And in terms of the curriculum, or the Teaching and Learning Committee, our staff will be visiting highly-performing schools that incorporate guided reading starting at the end of the month, actually, two weeks. So we're very excited.
Okay. As far as stakeholder communication, we're going to have report cards sent home this Friday. We've added something new through our counselor, Patrice Larue, this year. She started a discussion group called Coffee in Conversation, where she has chosen various topics on social-emotional wellness for our students. And it's aimed at our parents to come in and learn about kids at the middle school level. As far as the Communication Committee, we just started again this last Monday, sending out the weekly e-newsletter. So if you have not been receiving that, please email me directly, and I'll make sure that I add you to that list. As far as student life goes, the Smile Station will be here on January 24th. We had a wonderful Spelling Bee event last week, where we had our guest pronouncer, Stan Boni, come in. We had a record number of 75 tremendous spellers, the first all-girl group of winners in recent Brenna Bronker, fifth grade champion, Hannah Edwards, sixth grade champion, Jessica Lee, seventh grade champion, Beverly Siff, eighth grade champion, and Lindsay Davis, which she was the overall champion and the CBMS representative in the annual Vindicator Spelling Bee. Red Cross will be here in February to present information to the fifth and sixth grade on the importance of donating blood. And today, our eighth graders were scheduled to go to the MCCTC, but that's been postponed to February due to the inclement weather. Thank you.
The high school, on the curriculum, I just want to report that our final exams took place Thursday, the 16th, and Friday, the 17th. We started our new semester on Tuesday, and everything, no, no major issues. We were faced with, so we weren't faced with any major issues. The staff will be reviewing the Chromebooks for the 2014-2015 school year. The sales rep's going to stop out on February 3rd, drop off some of the tablets to us. We'll pass them out to our departments. And then, at the end of the week or the following week, the sales rep will be in to meet with each department, answer any questions, and go over Google Apps with them at that time. Our Curriculum Council met on Wednesday, January 16th, and we discussed a variety of topics as they relate to the school year, next school year. Two of the more important issues centered on Zero Period and a new policy as it relates to dropping honors classes and AP classes. And more to come about that. And this time, we'll turn it over to Mike.
The high school also really reaped the benefits of the new security system that was put in over the Christmas holiday. And if you look on the newsletter, there's some pictures of the administrators and SRO guards going using the system. It's fantastic. It is absolutely wonderful. We would like to thank the board, the central office, for supporting that. It's just wonderful. The clarity is incredible. If you come up to the school, we can show it to you. It's really something to see. We had our annual high school Christmas program on December 20th. That was the last day of school. That's kind of a tradition. The high school is into traditions, is maintaining and keeping all those wonderful, wonderful traditions. That's one of them. A sports update. I don't have to tell you how well our sports teams are doing. It's just been a fantastic winter season for all of them. I don't want to miss anybody, but get out to a sporting event, watch these kids perform. It's just fantastic. They're just wonderful. The coaches are doing a great job. Our speech team, also Speech and Debate Team, state champs last year. They were two tournaments recently. One was hosted at Canfield High School on January 4th, which Jeremy is proud to say that we did finish first in our own tournament, which is a good thing. We also attended a tournament in Silvania, which is a suburb of Toledo. Over 1,000 students in 41 schools. This is the top tournament in the state, and for the first time in the history of Canfield High School, we took first place. So kudos to Jeremy and his group. They just keep doing a fantastic job. January and February, believe it or not, are probably the busiest time of a high school. It's incredible. We have events almost every night, January and February. Here we go. We're going to host the EOWL Wrestling Tournament on January 31st. It's a bunch of, a lot of schools in this wrestling tournament. We actually have four maps set up. We're going to have three in the gym. We're going to put one in the cafeteria. That's how much, is we meet tons and tons of people there. Our Sweethearts Dance is February 8th. It's held at the Embassy traditionally. It's a great event. Band pasta dinner, February 22nd. We have Dinner Theater on February 1st. Mrs. Scourge does a fantastic job with that. She's a wonderful, wonderful choir teacher. We're very, very lucky to have her. We also are going to have the Dental Band. Is it called the Smile Dance?
Smile Station.
Smile Station. I call it the Dental Band. And that'll be on the 24th. Believe it or not, we're already planning, and eighth-grade orientation's coming up in about three weeks, if you can believe that, where we transition the kids from the eighth grade into the high school. So that starts the scheduling process. On an academic note, there's something called Google Drive, which is a program. It's a Google App, which is really a really neat thing that our English department has had wonderful results with, where kids are actually at home on their computer, and they're typing their papers, and they're actually talking to the teacher when the teacher's at home. They set this up through something called Google Drive. And our English teachers are just thrilled about this. There's no more of the dog ate my paper, because everything's up in the cloud. They call it the cloud. And then you retrieve it, and it's amazing what you can do. If you remember taking an English class in college or in high school, there was that old red pen man who was just ripping that thing up. And actually, the teacher can actually do almost the same thing on a computer. But technology continues to increase, and we hope to offer our kids advantages in technology. So we're real excited and real proud about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just have one question. If you can, you can address it next month, not right now. I don't want to spring it on you. For teachers like myself, when I was teaching, that weren't very computer-literate, Mike's back there laughing, because he knows, how do you bring them up to speed? That's how, so if you could address that next month, that would be good, just for my benefit, because that would be neat if I was still there. You know, I could turn it on and off if I was good. Do some things.
Sure. Yes, sir.
I have a question. I know our speech team does an outstanding job. A lot of the athletic programs, we have feeder programs, be it the Canfield Baseball Club or Little Cardinals or whatever. Do we have anything in the middle school that feeds the speech team?
No.
Okay. I was just curious.
That would be spectacular, though, if we would like to allocate resources for that. I think we would have...
Would you, you need some more time to do that? Is that what you're saying?
Time?
Yeah. That's a resource.
I will tell you this, Mr. Olson. I will make whatever time is necessary for our kids. How's that?
And we all know how you like to talk, so I think you should hit that right now.
There's another resource.
I'm a delegator.
All right. Thank you very much. Alex, do you want to excuse them?
If, if.
You may be excused to go home and build a fire and do whatever you need to do. It's too bad you can't start your cars from here. That would be a help.
How do you know that?
Well, hopefully, you can start your car from here, and then everybody else can pile in your car until their car warms up. Okay. We were given minutes from the December 18th, 2013 meeting and the January 2nd, 2014 organizational meeting. The board has presented minutes before this time, so we get a chance to read them over. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Are there any comments, questions? Do I have a second first?
Second.
All right. Do you have any comments or questions? All right. Could you please call the role?
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich? Yes. Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes. It gives us to the Treasurers' report.
Mr. Jordan, did you have any special presentation?
After the, after.
I've treated the call with questions, so I'm just going to go through these rather quickly, since you've all had a chance to look at them already. On the check payment register, page 3, about halfway down the page, Reed Oil Company for $24,000. This was for diesel fuel, about 7,300 gallons we purchased at a time, put in the underground storage tank over at the bus garage. I don't have any other comments on the check payment register. Our appropriation report, you can see on the last page, 50% of years passed. We've also paid 50% of our payrolls, and so we're right on target with our adopted budget since we're halfway through the year. Purchase order register, new items start on page 9. And I want to point out one item on page 10, halfway down, the SOS Security Systems for $14,000. That was what Mr. Mulvaney was speaking about, cameras at the high school, the additional cameras that were installed over break. And last report, the investment report, not much has changed on that. However, you'll notice that the CDs that are on there are maturing at the end of this month, beginning of next month, so I've been working on getting those replaced. Any questions? Need a motion to approve?
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the Treasurers' report? So moved. Second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Being none? Call the role?
Mr. Bovin?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich? Here. Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes. Have everybody signed up? No? Okay. Special recognition?
I'd like to just remind folks that it's been a few months now, Mr. and Mrs. Luchansky were in, and there was a, there was a request by Diamond Backers Booster Organization, baseball, softball, to have a request filled that they would like to go out and look for donations to erect an indoor facility on our campus, our high school campus. And I asked Mr. Luchansky to come in here tonight and give us an update on where we're at with the funding. These were all local donations, businesses, and individual donations. And I'd like to have him just give us an update in where we're at and where we go from here.
All the board members, just an updated presentation package. I'm treasurer of the Big Boosters, and I guess chairman of this committee. I have with me my wife, Amory, Tony Brass, and softball head coach, Ray Molesky. In October, we came in and made a proposal to put together an indoor training facility for baseball and softball. It would have been 80 feet wide, 80 feet long, 48 feet wide, 15 feet high. And we had a goal at that time of $100,000. And when I made this proposal and got the concurrence of the board, we had a goal of $100,000 to do this project. And we have, as of today, we've got a $50,000 grant today from the James and Coria Sennafani Foundation for $50,000. So we have, in pledges, in in-kind contributions, in cash, $121,000 to construct this building. So instead of a pole building, a very nice pole building that we're going to put up, we would like now to make that a nicer building, either a block building or a stick building. And our next step would be to hire an architect. So I guess I'm asking for the concurrence of the board to take that next step to hire an architect, to get drawings, to get blueprints, and, or building specifications, and get those drawn up, so that we can go out to bid. Again, this is all run through the Big Boosters, which is a 501(c)(3) non-public charity or public charity. And we would then in turn build the building and turn it over to the school.
Does anybody have any questions?
We had a nice gathering. It's been a couple of weeks now. Mr. Tanser is a liaison to the board, Buildings and Grounds person, who added a lot of information and really in-depth conversation of what has transpired over years, because this is not something that just happened overnight. A lot of conversation for several years now, and I just want to express our gratitude of the school system as a whole, of Mark and his group, dedicated individuals, and as you can tell by the list, it's just not one or two people stepping forward. We have several, several that have stepped forward here. And I think as people were hearing about it, I think maybe more and more came forward.
Yeah, I don't think we're done.
I don't think we're done.
I think we have a lot more people who want to donate to make this a beautiful building that maybe even more teams could use.
And it's, I think it'll be interesting. Some people were asking, how close are you? How close are you to your goal? And as you got closer, it looks like that more and more wanted to get involved. And now that people are going to find out how close we are, putting shovels into the ground, I think even more people could come forward.
Yeah, we're ready, we're ready to put a shovel in the ground, so I'd like to take that next step and hire an architect.
You know, permits, obviously, is always a concern, and we do things right, and go by the book, and getting everything accommodated that way. I know the board is very interested in that, and definitely asked for that when we talked about the concession stand that was erected by local people. So obviously, we'll make sure all of that's in place before anything happens. But great dialogue and great effort by many people, so thank you.
Question, do we, and I'm looking maybe more at Patty with this question. Technically, do we have to do anything while this is being built as a board? I know we ultimately will own the structure, but is it okay for the Big Boosters to run everything themselves and turn it over at a later point?
In the past, that's how we've handled some of the other structures. The concession stand is how we proceeded there. I certainly don't have an issue with it.
I just want to make sure we cover our bases.
Yeah, oh yeah. The input of the board, Barry, Alex, Patty is always going to be a part of it.
We're involved in those opening conversations, and we'll definitely be involved as we move forward. Just want to reiterate, no tax dollars, whether it be general fund or PI money, are going for this project.
That's correct.
So that's, that's just outstanding, and I think the community will definitely appreciate that and be very proud of the structure.
And as I understand it, we answered the questions of the dings by hitting the ball over the fence?
We hope they do get it.
That's why I do so.
And 2013 does.
Well, I didn't want to see the fence raised to make it more difficult for the girls to bowl over the fence. I mean, kind of punishing the girls for putting it in. I just didn't want to see that. But if we answered that, and I understand we have answered that question, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, very much.
All right. Thank you very much.
What's your timetable?
I'd like to meet with an architect next Wednesday. This is a sample of Batty Barn that was built that I was involved in, and this is the architect, Stephen Berry, that did it. So I'm confident that he knows how to do things. It's a block building, which we're looking at doing, putting in place. So I'd like to meet with him Wednesday at 3:30 next week, so whoever would want to come and join us. I think the positioning of the building, getting it close to the plumbing, getting it close to the electrical is a big part of this. And talking about exterior look and all that.
Electric sewage, all of that came into play when we were targeting to take a look at where the structure should go, the lay of the land, proximity between the two facilities that are actually needed, baseball and softball, walking distance, safety forces. We talked about it being inside the football stadium proper. We thought maybe it would be best to enclose it with fencing. And, you know, we talked to Hutch, and it was something that they prefer it outside, so that in case anybody needed safety force personnel to get to them, it was easy access. And outside from the football facility would be best for them. So a lot of people are involved in this conversation, just want to make sure we do it right.
And this is what you need for a permit, so...
Anthony, in lieu of you meeting with him next Thursday, I think it would be pertinent if we met first, because we've already looked into some things like that, and due to circumstances that we've already discussed with the county and the city, we may not need blueprints. So in lieu of hiring an architect and spending that money, we might not need those. And/or we have someone that will draw them for free, so that's something we should get together as a group and discuss that before you guys spend...
Maybe we could help facilitate that through our office, and we'll make sure everybody's available.
And Wednesday, 3:30. That's when I'm meeting.
So a week from today.
Prior to that.
So we'll definitely get something on the docket before then.
And York Mahoney donated the heating, so he can provide the drawings for the heating. That's something that's...
Wonderful. Beautiful.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I take a couple minutes?
Sure.
The month of January is always set aside for Board Recognition Month. And a lot of people don't realize what board members, what it entails, what it encompasses, and all of the time and effort that's involved for minimal pay. I mean, they definitely don't do it for the pay, they definitely don't do it for the notoriety. They definitely do it for the love of kids and families and the Canfield community. So in recognition of Board Appreciation Month, we made sure that we have some appreciation certificates here. And Patty, do we have a resolution there that, do you mind? Since our last name is Kessner? You could take that over. We lost Brian there, and if you don't mind, I'd put you on the spot.
No, that's fine. Whereas it shall be the mission of the Campfield Local School District to provide all students with the best possible education and whereas the school board sets the direction for our community's public schools by envisioning the community's education future and whereas the school board sets policies and procedures to govern all aspects of school district operation and whereas the school board keeps attention focused on progress toward the school district's goals and maintains a two-way communications loop with all segments of the community and whereas serving on a school board requires an unselfish devotion of time and service to carry on the mission and business of the school district and whereas the school board must respond on behalf of the community to the educational needs of students and whereas the school board voluntarily accepts the above-mentioned responsibilities. Now therefore, be it resolved that we do hereby proclaim January 2014 as School Board Recognition Month in the Campfield School District. We encourage all citizens to publicly and privately thank the school board members from all school districts serving this community for their dedicated service to our children. Signed, Alex.
These five don't only bleed red, they bleed red and black, I can attest to that. And again, thank you for your efforts and look forward to a wonderful year.
Thank you.
You don't mind?
All right, that takes us to new business personnel.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend for hiring a classified employee, that's your exhibit number one, Dolores Sullivan, van aide approximately three hours per day at twelve dollars, eighty-one cents per hour effective January 23rd of fourteen. Exhibit one A, Mrs. Sullivan, if we remember, was hired as a van aide back in 2012 but had been rifled, so she's coming back off.
All right, based on the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion to hire Dolores Sullivan as a van aide?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? Being none, call the roll.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tancer?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Another hiring of a classified employee, Bruce Ware, Hilltop Head Custodian, eight hours per day, sixteen dollars, fifty cents per hour effective January 23rd of fourteen. Exhibit one B. Mr. Ware was hired as a custodian for our school system back in 2000 and has worked at both the high school and Hilltop since that time.
Based on the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion to hire Bruce Ware as Hilltop Head Custodian?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All right, discussion? Being none, please call the roll.
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tancer?
Yes.
I'd like to just mention here very briefly, Bruce was one of a few in-house candidates that we interviewed. All of them fine individuals, fine people, but Bruce was just the right fit there and we thank you for that. Another new business personnel, like to approve licensed substitutes, that's your exhibit number two. Holly Cahill, Jerry Eby, Jennifer Copanek, Marilyn Mayhit, Caitlin Maury, Deborah Shell, Megan Shively, Joshua Smith, Jessica Stacy, Crystal Stanton and Chelsea Trichler.
All right, based on the superintendent's recommendation, may I have a motion to approve the licensed substitutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? I figured I'd have to reread them.
Perfectly.
All right, could you call the roll?
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tancer?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend for hiring extracurricular positions, that's your exhibit number three. Hottick District License Extracurricular Resolution 54-2014. Assistant Track Coach Charlie Peters, zero to one year experience at 3401. Another assistant track coach at an PREPA, again, 3401. And if you would like me to read them all, I can. Non-licensed Extracurricular 55-2014, zero to one year experience, the head track coach, Mike Yankee, at 5102. Assistant Track Coach Nick Wagner, 4081, that's two-plus years' experience. And a Jets volunteer, Mike Cresimano, again, no expense for that volunteer.
Based on the superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion to hire the extracurricular positions being proposed. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just want to let you folks know, they have all passed all the credentials that's needed and they're served.
I do just one quick question, are most of the licensed substitutes, are they in the building working for different folks now or are they available to come in?
They will be available from this point on as substitutes, as needed. Thanks.
All right, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tancer?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
I'd like to talk about and review the school calendar, that's your exhibit number four, and if you don't mind pulling that out. And to follow new law, I'd like to just address a couple of issues with you in the law. From the 2014-15 school year on, school systems have an opportunity to set their calendar to hours instead of days. So there are no specific amount of days technically that are necessary to have, we now have hours. And along with that in the law, and Mr. Britton is here, he can attest to this, we are now obligated to bring forth hearing-type basis, just conversation in open session, school calendars at least a month prior to the adoption process. So we are looking to adopt in February, so that's why we're bringing it to you at this point. If you remember, we did this last year anyways, I'd like to bring it forward a year, a month prior to, just so that we can work out some things, if there's anything that you see and notice that we'd like to address. And if you remember last year, we actually did address some things after the first month process and it worked out real well. So a lot of things about the law are good. It gives us some flexibility. As you know, we have two hours delays that we have to work with now, early dismissals that are concerned about, calamity days that we're bound to five. Depending upon how many hours we choose to come to school, we have some flexibility in the building in extra hours in the year to work with those calamity days that we anticipate. The calendar that you have in front of you, we have plenty of hours built in so that if we were to, let's say, have up to six calamity days next year, we can take those without putting in jeopardy of making up hours.
Can you give an example?
An example? Let's say for instance, we now have two calamity days and we have a two-hour delay at this point built up already this year. Our two-hour delay was not counted technically against us, that was a freebie in view in the legislature and in the state. Now, starting next year, though every hour that are not part of the instructional, that the instructional day is taken away, that's counted against. So that is counted as time out of the classroom. So we would be counted as instructional hours, six each day that we've taken, plus two. So now instead of two calamity days only, we would have now built up fourteen hours against the calamity.
How many hours is this per year?
You have 1,090, I want to say, I can give you specifics, I don't have it right off hand, but we have hours that we have for high school students.
I was going to ask.
And we have highs, and then we have hours for middle school and elementary. So there's difference there. We will be going all-day kindergarten. That affects you differently than if you were a part-day or every-other-day kindergarten school system, so.
In some states in the South, they count something very similar to that and if you have an assembly that's non-educational such as an athletic assembly, that takes away. Is that part of the law too?
We are going to build instructional purpose for everything that we do, whether it be field trip, whether it be assembly, we can tie it in to some type of instruction. But if they go out to recess, not counted. If they go to lunch, not counted. So all of that is, all of that is.
And this is definitely law now?
This is law, signed, sealed and delivered.
I have a question regarding, I know we've been flipping back and forth depending on how Easter falls.
Yes.
Which one is Easter in that next year? Is Easter the 29th of March?
Which calendar do you have?
That's 1450.
Okay. April 5th is actually.
So we would be taking spring break a week before?
That's one of your, that's one of the options that we were taking a look at. You have the option, they actually have the wrong one. I apologize, I'm looking at that right now, Chris must not have gotten you the other. The calendar that we're looking at, and I'm just going to talk you through this, so I apologize. The calendar that you have in front of you has the week prior to Easter, which incorporates Good Friday. The majority of the county, in Mahoney County, has gone to the week after Easter, which means the Career and Tech Center also went the week after.
The new one she did today that she emailed out does have.
Emailed, but the copied one is not, so I can walk you through it.
I'll make you a copy.
But the question is, if it's the week after and Easter falls late, will the county look at that or will it be the week after regardless of testing?
We are really trying to get a consensus through the county to have a spring break.
Wonderful.
Consistent no matter when Easter is. We have a handful of superintendents that are on board with this, us being one, but we are not quite there. And if you take a look at no matter where you go in the state, your career and tech centers, your JVS's dictate this a lot from your calendar.
Can I ask, John, what are you finding? Is there a movement towards?
There is a, if you look this year, you have spring breaks beginning some March 31st, some the next week, some the week after that, and I'm thinking Poland, just I was looking the other day, is the week of Easter, which is real late this year. So it's, yeah, and you're in the same bag as Poland is. So it's all over the board and that's what they're trying to avoid. You know, it's a lot of people, for instance, let me give you an example. We know that we're tied so much at the start of the school year, you know what we're dealing with. So, and a lot of districts like to start mid-August and that would be, that would be very difficult for us to manage with the fair and everything else that's going on. So we're going to look at next year, Good Friday off and then the following week. So that's the difference that's in front of you. What also we're looking at, to get students and staff out the first week of June next year, we are actually going to be going December 22nd and 23rd, Monday and Tuesday prior to Christmas. So that would then get our staff and students out first week of June instead of going the second, going into the second week of June. A lot of benefits that way. Instructional days prior to standardized testing, more important than the end of June, not saying that there isn't any instruction going on in June, but I think we're confident to say more beneficial before than the end of June.
The graduation would tend to be the seventh right there?
That's tentative date, yes.
I see flex days here, okay. And I see five, maybe nine of them, what are they?
Are you talking about flex or waiver days?
No, flex days.
Because there's different, there's only actually one flex day.
Well, it says here. Here goes. This might not be very, very.
Okay. The flex days, there is one built-in day in the calendar at the beginning of the year. Staff has an opportunity to come in for professional development and some items that we're going to be having the week prior to when they actually start. So the week of the 18th in August we're looking at right now, they can come in any of those days or the 28th. So they have, they have six days that they can pick, they have to come in one of those days. And what we're looking at there is, is again, fair week, people really want to have off that Thursday, they can come in one of those days, week prior. We did that for the first time this year, it worked out real well. Great deal of professionalism with our staff, they came, they performed the duties and tasks that we asked them to do and they didn't take advantage of it. So we felt and we polled them and I think they appreciated that, so we're going to offer that again this year. The waiver days, waiver days are built in, those are student days, but they are staff workdays and again, those are built in for professional development. Mr. Frye mentioned about technology. We are going to concentrate heavily at the end of this year and at the beginning, prior to the start of next school year, to make sure that we have staff updated on new technology that can be utilized for instruction in the classroom. That is going to be a big push for next year. So those are what our waiver days will look like for next year.
Okay.
I can't see anything else on here that's different than what you're used to seeing. If we were to have just adopted this year's calendar with no changes whatsoever, we could have had, we could have had this in front of you on the docket today for approval. The law states this is, this is that first year, giving you a waiver of if you're not making any changes, you can adopt it without, a month prior to the adoption for conversation. We made some adjustments, but again, we even talked about this a month before we adopted it last year. We just felt it was good practice and good conversation so everybody knew what was coming down.
When would those critical elementary, middle school tests that we always are concerned about, when do they happen?
They are not on the website yet. The people work different times a year, I guess, and expectations are on different people.
Are they traditionally early?
They are traditionally mid to late April. That is one reason why, one of the reasons why, we would love to take a look at a spring break at the end of March and make it consistent, just like at college. Our people know that this would be our year, this would be our week for spring break and it would be away from testing, but.
That makes all the sense in the world. I've thought about that for many years, but can we do this by ourselves and say, this is going to be our spring week and maybe another school system does the same, another one does the same, and maybe through reform don't want to do it, but we do it?
We could. Again, we have to be cognizant of parochial routes, transportation, we also have to be cognizant of transportation for our career and tech center and any other alternative schools that we go to. If they are in session, we are transporting and getting our fleet on the road. So cost efficient, cost effective to try to come together, coming to the minds. We'll leave it at that. There's going to be some change in leadership throughout the county, even again this year, and we're very hopeful that we can get something done for the fall. The short answer to your question is, we could. Could be a little more, we're not going to do that.
Sometimes you have to be a leader.
Sometimes you've got to be a leader, I understand. So just want to bring that forth and answer any questions you have. You've got a month here, if you have any questions, feel free to call in and we'd be happy to answer those for you. We've got a pretty good working relationship with our CEA. We sat down and talked some things out and actually, we can't take their credit for the flex day, those folks recommended that for last year and we said, okay, let's try it out. Again, it was beneficial, it was effective, that's why we're going back to it. So we try to talk this out with our local association.
Okay, thank you. Brings us to new business three.
I'd recommend to appoint the treasurer as a designatee to receive required public records training for the Highway Revised Code 109.43B and 149.43E1.
Now I want to thank the treasurer. Volunteering to do that service.
Do you really have to? Do you really have to do that? You could write it at this point.
Well, if I don't do it, five board members need to go and do it.
Oh, you got to do it.
Five?
Five.
All five.
I recommend Patty, let's make this one. Patty's always looking to help.
That's right.
Wait a minute, where's it at?
It's not Florida, I'll tell you that. Two Orleans here, Marty Drew.
All right, based on the recommendation of the superintendent, I move that we appoint, I mean, to appoint the treasurer as a designatee to receive required public records training. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
That was quick.
You can have a second.
Barry now seconded.
All right, any other discussion? Oh no, being none, please call the roll.
Mr. Bova?
Absolutely.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tancer?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes. I'd like to recommend approve our out-of-state overnight field trip, exhibit number five, fifth grade students to Camp Fitch, North Springfield, PA, June 2nd through the 4th.
fifth-grade students to Camp Fitch, North Springfield, PA, June 2nd through the 4th of 2014, for an outdoor education experience.
Based on the superintendent's recommendation, to approve the out-of-state overnight field trip, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Yes, I just regressed that moment.
I'd like to recommend to accept the donation as per your enclosed list, that's your exhibit number C. Those donations total $12,268.95.
Based on the superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion to accept the donations.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Being none, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
I have to point a few of those out to you. And the one is, I never understood why I was always told, save box tops. And as you can tell, Hilltop gained over $2,700 from box tops, $1,500 at CH Campbell. And those middle school kids just, they don't eat, I guess, because there's only 180 there. But amazing what a box top can do. Just amazing.
Their grandmother's called.
I would have to think, they're not doing it, yeah. Yeah. Doesn't matter. I'd like to, if you don't mind, just go to superintendent's update, because I'd like to just highlight something for you that what just transpired over the past 48 hours in the central office, maybe less than 48 hours. As you know, we talked about, back on November 20th, a bus bid. And during those, we went out for bid, bids were accepted, and there was, we thought that some buses were ordered. And luckily enough, just with conversation, I think Patty started a conversation about types of funds and how we could possibly go about purchasing these and saving not only the general fund, but permanent improvement fund. And a call was out, was put out to Myers Equipment, who was the recipient of the bid. And it was mentioned to us that the new bus that they had in stock was actually delivered, which if you'd like to go take a look at it, come when the sun's up, I will go walk out and see, because we do have that one. But we were going to buy, we were going to order three additional buses. We received one, but we were going to order three more, correct?
Four.
Four, I'm sorry. We thought those were ordered. Well, we found out that they were actually not by mistake. So this actually saved us some definite concern and aggravation down the block when we found out now. Because if you remember during the process, you can't order buses and think that they're going to show up here overnight. This takes months upon months. Well, luckily enough, we were able to get order in, and we are ordering five buses at this point, instead of four. And if you see here, the base price is 85, 751. There's a little bit of a change to the original. We're actually going to receive these buses for a little less cost, because some additions that we looked to add, we're not needing. We had some conversation with mechanics and transportation supervisor. There was some add-ons to the buses that those folks really didn't necessarily need. We talked to them, and they gave the recommendation to us that, don't add those on the order. So the total cost now, and also, one of those buses are going to be transformed into a handicap option. We have two handicap buses that we put on the road daily. One of those buses is a 2,000, high miles, and we're like this every time we send that out on a field trip. And actually, it was almost, it broke down for a period of time in Salem. And when we're talking about handicap buses, we're not talking about, okay, we'll take a spare and we'll just transfer kids, handicap accessible. So we are in desperate need of a replacement. So we are going to have four regular buses, I guess you can say, with one handicap accessible bus. The grand total's going to be 437,390. So just wanted to definitely bring that to your attention during the superintendent's update.
Is there any outset funding available for the handicap option?
We looked at it, and the fund that we are using, we can use this fund directly. Again, it's salvaging permanent improvement dollars or general fund dollars altogether. So we're gaining flexibility. You got it. So I say, thank you. Patty, did you want to touch on anything there?
I'd probably just like the board to approve the new purchase of five buses at that total cost, so it's in the minutes.
Yep.
Do we approve the purchase of five or the purchase of one additional? We already approved...
Well, it's a, we're in a different amount.
It's changing.
We're changing the amount and everything. We just want to approve as per this sheet.
Okay. Based on the superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion to approve revision to the bus acceptance from November 20th, 2013. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, questions? Could you please call the roll?
Mr. Bova?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasich?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Tanser?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
If you don't mind, I'd like to touch base on one more item. Hate to take too much of your time, but definitely want to communicate this to you. As Mr. Moldavon and Mr. Tulio mentioned, and everyone hopefully saw in our district newsletter, the security upgrades have already begun. We promised the community that we would address this if a levy were to be passed in November. This was one area that we could address. Transportation was one area that was a larger concern, because we're, as you can tell, we're wearing five buses to fulfill that promise to the community. The safety issues, number one priority to us, safety and security of staff and students and visitors into the schools. So with the cameras at the high school, we also receive, we're going to be receiving bids on buzzer system in middle school, just like we have at the high school and the two elementary schools. And we also walk the middle school for cameras, similar to what we have at the high school. We're going to walk the two elementary buildings starting next week to find what would be best for those elementary schools. So we are not giving you a timeline, because I hate to give timelines here, but as soon as possible, our goal is, is to have cameras and buzzer systems on all of these buildings. Again, I hate to give timelines, but as soon as possible. So, that's all.
All right. Thank you very much. And under other... Misinformation. We can do that after a second. All right. I need a motion to move into executive session for personnel matters.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Being none, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bova?
Yes.